Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Southwest Campus of Church for All Nations. We're glad that you all can join us this evening. Our first forum here this evening is for candidates from D2 we're invited and D12. We do have fewer candidates than we initially started out with, and same for the second forum. So we are going to go a little bit longer than 45 minutes. We're going to probably go for a full hour with this group. We are recording this, so I'll let you know at the end where to find the recording after the fact. But we'd like to welcome you. And first thing I'm going to do is ask you all if you wouldn't mind standing. And we're going to open with a word of prayer and then the pledge of allegiance. And the flag is straight behind us here.
Thank you. Everyone, let's just take a minute to lift up some gratitude and some praise to our Creator. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for the opportunity to exercise the rights which you laid out in our founding documents. We thank you for the wisdom and the serenity and the foresight upon which this country was built. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here in respect, in honor, and in the name of justice, Lord. We just ask that tonight would be a blessed night, filled with your mercy, your grace, and your wisdom. We lift up this forum to you now. We lift up the candidates. Bless their tongues, Lord. Bless their ears. Give them the words that you wish them to speak and give them the ears to hear what needs to be heard from you. We just ask for your divine protection. We ask for your divine blessing. And we ask for your divine joy as we relish the freedoms that no one in the world has but us. And in Jesus' precious name, we say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Vanna. And I'm going to try not to fall off the stage. No, we're all right. We're good. Well, they're all in there, so I can move over here a little bit. Couple of quick housekeeping notes. If you would please silence your cell phones, we'd appreciate that. Bathrooms are out the door to the left. We are going to have time individually with the candidates. So just so that you know, tonight, while we're here on the stage, I'm going to be asking all of the questions to the candidates. We're not going to do questions from you all, but you will have ample amount of time with the candidates out in the foyer area. They have tables set up out there with their information, and you can do meet and greet and grill them till you're satisfied that you know who they are. So thank you for that. And we're going to start off, we're going to do something that has been termed the lightning round. So the candidates, this is a yes or no question. Yes is signified if they raise their hand. No is signified if they don't raise their hand. So I'm going to introduce who we have here with us tonight first, and then we're going to go into the lightning round. So we've got, okay, Lynn Stadjahar Platt from D12, candidate for D12. Rayanne Weber, also candidate for D12. Mary Louise Fidler, D12. Randy Case, D12. And Joyce Salazar from D2. So how about a round of applause for them? Thank you all for being here tonight. And so with that, let's go ahead and jump into the lightning round questions. So that you all know as well that are here and are watching this later, we had a CIT forum at the CFAN Northeast Campus earlier this week on Wednesday night that was D49, D11, and D20. We're using the same format here, same questions, so that everybody across El Paso County is getting the same information. Okay? So just want you to know that. There is one question specifically that I will ask Joyce, because D2 does have a ballot initiative right now, but otherwise, everybody else is getting the same thing. So first question, lightning round. Yes or no? Hand up, hand down. Do you support mask mandates? Okay? Thank you. Second question. Do you support vaccine mandates? And these are specific to school and your role as a candidate, obviously. Third question. Do you support the teaching of critical race theory? Nope. Okay. Very good. And Joyce, last question is for you. So right now, D2 has a ballot initiative for D, if I stand to be corrected, but for D, asking that the district be allowed to keep all tax monies received versus issuing Tabor refunds. Are you yes or no in support of that? Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. All righty. So that being said, gives you guys an opportunity to meet folks. So we're going to move into the opening statements. So each candidate is going to have one and a half minutes to introduce themselves to you and share whatever information they choose is appropriate. If you all are watching down here, we do have a flag, so each candidate is going to get a 15-second warning. And when the flag goes up, that means their time is done and their microphone will be cut off. So that you all are aware of what's going on. The sound is not cutting out accidentally. All right. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lynn for her opening statement.
My name is Lynn Stadjahar Platt, and I'm running for Cheyenne Mountain District 12 School Board. In my day job, I am an in-house transactional corporate and advice attorney. With a bad background in litigation, I just really pretty much negotiate contracts now. For the last decade, I've served on my family's board of directors for a manufacturing company we have that's actually across the river here. I am a graduate of Cheyenne Mountain High School, as were three of my siblings. My mother also graduated from Cheyenne Mountain High School, and she's a retired Skyway Elementary School teacher. My two kids are current students, one at Cheyenne Mountain Junior High and one at Skyway Elementary. And I also have two nieces that are at the high school right now. I have an undergraduate business degree from CU Boulder, and I received my law degree as well as an MBA from the University of Denver. I have been very involved parent in the district for the last 11 years. Both my kids went through Canyon Preschool, and I was a volunteer there. And they've both gone through, or one has gone through and one's going through Skyway. And I have been a member of the board of the PTO for the last eight years. I've actually been thinking about running for the board for about two years, which is probably different than most candidates this time around, after witnessing our board make several votes for things that are clearly unpopular. Thank you.
I'm Rayanne Weber, and I am a family physician of 20 years, a mother of two, former Army active-duty family physician, and a founder of two businesses. One is the Family Care Center that serves our community, military family members, their active-duty and veterans, as well as the surrounding community. And Direct Care, which was founded to fight the opioid epidemic. After that time, I had a bit of a lull and experienced what I think a lot of us had is an awakening to what has been going on in our country, and decided it was important to run for school board. I value what our founding fathers gifted to us. I will stand against CRT. I am fighting for parents' rights. It is one thing to say that you support parents' rights, and it's another thing to fight for it. Parents' rights to choose what is best for their children's health. We as parents are endowed by God to care for our children, and we are the people that know best. There's a lot of battles that are coming up, and understanding how to fight those battles, I think that you need to also consider this one lovely lady next to me, because we need two seats. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to introduce Mary Louise, and I apologize, Rayanne. Lynn caught me off guard with her quick transition there. So, no, you're fine. You're fine. It's all good. It's all good. So Mary Louise Fidler with D12.
Hi. Yes, I'm Mary Louise Fidler. I got into this race rather quickly. It happened one morning when I was dropping my son off for school, thinking that he was not going to be wearing a mask because it was simply recommended. The choice was still mine. When I pulled up to the school, there was a sign-out front that said masks were required. And immediately, my choice was taken away. So that's when I stepped in. Now, it's not just about the masks for me. There's a lot of other things that are coming towards the school districts across America, across our entire country, having to do with. And we see it already happening in workforces. We see it happening in California, where vaccines are going to be mandated. It's not going to stop there. It's only going to stop if we, as American citizens, stand up and put a stop to it. So I've gotten myself into a little trouble since stepping into this race so far. You may have seen some news broadcasts or some news articles. Mary Louise Fidler, yes, that is me. And I will stand up. I will fight. I will not give in. I will not be pressured by, what is it, the FBI, right? Domestic terrorists or something like that? Yes. I'm just a mom of three boys, and I want them to grow up knowing about our Constitution, knowing about their rights, knowing about their... Oh! Oh, I didn't see the flag the first time.
Thank you. See, we were serious. We weren't joking around, man. There's no messing around. There's no messing around. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, Randy Case, District 12 as well.
Hi, everybody. I'm Randy Case. I'm a Colorado Springs native, born and raised here, and went through Cheyenne Mountain Schools from Skyway to Junior High to high school. Have raised four children in the district, all of whom are independent adults now. And I started in the school board as an appointee. I appointed a vacancy when there was eight candidates for one vacancy, and I was appointed by the other board members. I then ran for my seat in 2017, and am running for my second term. I was educated here in Colorado Springs at UCCS, and then went on to University of Denver Law School. I've been in the real estate business and an attorney in this community since high school. I got my real estate license. Some of you may know my family. It's been here since the late '30s. Been on the board for now those dates I've been giving you, and am continuing to find that the results that we are with the kids, we have some of the best scores in the state. You'll find we are number one in the state in some of the things we've been doing. So it's been difficult to navigate the COVID world, but we've still gotten great scores in our district. Looking forward to working with whoever is elected. I'm one of two seats that are open. I'm running for reelection. Appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Randy. And Joyce Salazar, our lone representative from D2 this evening. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joyce Salazar, and I'm running for school board for Harrison School District 2. I have, I graduated from Harrison High School in 1982, but I also attended Strutmore Hills Elementary and Gorman Middle School. So I've been in the district for a very long time. My children attended D2 schools. My grandchildren attend D2 schools. And so since I attended, I've seen great things happening with our district. I work as a community outreach coordinator for a coalition that focuses on 80910 and 80916. So I've worked very intensely with community members. And so when we talk about the mask mandate, there are so many things that go into that. I also have a master's degree in social work with a focus in trauma-informed care. So with COVID, we understand that abuse cases went up. So this district has higher neglect and abuse calls to the 1-800 number. We've seen domestic violence go up. We've seen kids that don't have enough to eat. And so when we think about having our kids in school, our, thank you, talk to me outside.
All right, everybody. Let's have a round of applause. So thank you all for that introduction. So we're going to move on to the policy questions. And just so that the folks in the audience know, you'll see that each candidate has a random number. Randy's number four. And we've got number five, right? Are you number five or six? Joyce is number six down at the end. So number five was coming and didn't, and et cetera. So we're plugging in a few people here. But we're going to ask these questions randomly. So I'm going to get a card from Vanna here. I'll draw one. And we're going to go so that we're not just going back and forth down the line. And I'm also going to mix up the policy questions as I ask them. But so that you know, these policy questions, the candidates were provided these in advance and had an opportunity to prepare for this. So hopefully, you're going to get their best thoughts. And Lynn says, I don't know. It's Friday evening, so you get what you get. Right? So anyway, with that said, that's the process we're going to follow here. So question, our first question will be...
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. And they're going to have two minutes. So in this, for these answers, they're going to have two minutes. Okay? So question number one is going to go to candidate number three. So Mary Louise from District 12. And I'll ask you this one, since you're viral for this. Parents did not feel that school boards are listening to them. What would you do if elected to the board to help correct this?
I think town halls are a great way to get parental feedback. I see what's happening right now is the school boards are making decisions for our children, and we're not being consulted in what those are. In the past year, there've been a lot of people in leadership that have told us one thing, and then they switch, say something else, they switch, say something else. I'm having a little trouble trusting the people in authority. And so I want to be in the know. I want to know who's making the decisions, what they're going to be teaching our children, what they're going to be telling them. And I think waiting, for example, so if we get a notification a day before a presentation is going to be made at the school, say, on wellness, a day before is not soon enough for me to understand what is this wellness training? What is this about? I want to know what my kids are being taught, what are the philosophies, who is teaching it? And so I think those things should be brought to the table ahead of time, so parents can have a chance to look at it, to evaluate it, to make comments on it, and decide yes or no. Not, oh, it's happening tomorrow. Here's an opt-out. And I think town halls are a good way for that to happen. I think there's, I'm paying attention to this flag here. Town halls are a way to have the community come and be involved and voice their opinion. And before, even before you create something that needs to be presented, what are your concerns? What are the biggest things you're concerned about? What is raising, what is the, there's the flag. I'm nervous now. The flag. What is your biggest concern? Tell me. I want to hear, and then we can move together forward.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So one other thing, Mary Louise went first, so she doesn't get this privilege, but for the balance of the candidates, during their two-minute time period, they, we would ask that they answer their question, and if they have time remaining, they are allowed to go back to a question that has already been asked and contribute to that as well. So our next candidates moving forward will have that opportunity to circle back around to a question that has already been asked. Okay. Next question, candidate number six. Joyce Salazar. Question for you. How does the Colorado Constitution describe your authority as a school board member?
Well, I got the questions very late last night, so I did not have time to research that. And I do not have a background in political science. However, I do have a background in social work, and I do have experience in community engagement. So I would like to answer question number one. And that is, how do we engage parents? One way that I would engage parents, and that really is one of the things that I, that is on my platform, really meeting them where they are. Town halls are great. They're absolutely fabulous. However, people in marginalized communities often work two jobs, and so they don't have time to come to town halls. They don't have time to come to morning meetings, afternoon meetings. So meeting them at their home, asking them questions face-to-face, building those relationships. And that's how I've done my work. So I live by a mandate, I've lived by a mandate for the past 10 years, experiencing God, connecting people, serving others for a life made better. And it's worked. And so I would encourage everyone to dig a little, dig a little bit deeper and meet people where they are. Thank you.
Great use of the circle back. Well done. Next question is candidate number one, and that is Lynn. Lynn, so Bible clubs in schools have been restricted and in some cases completely removed. How would you change district policies to make sure, or what would you do to ensure that all students have their First Amendment rights to free speech and freedom of association for their clubs at school?
Well, I think I am lucky that my kids are in District 12. I am not aware that this is policy. We do have Young Life, which I was a product of and enjoyed immensely at Cheyenne Mountain. So I think that maybe that's not an issue at Cheyenne Mountain. However, we all know what the answer is when we're questioning free speech. You got to have more speech, more groups, more clubs, make it inclusive. I think we're having a crisis of banning everything that could possibly upset someone. And that just makes everyone intolerant of everyone. So I think that inclusion, which is something I've done in my career, I've been part of the diversity committee at the company I work at for a very long time. And we have fought very, very hard to make sure we're still an inclusion group versus somebody who's just talking about diversity. So we like to celebrate people's differences. We like to bring them out. We like to have parties where we celebrate something that someone does that's different that no one knows about. So we've done some really good work with that. So I think really, more inclusion, more clubs, let everybody have a chance. That's really all I have to say about that one. I do want to follow back really quick on the first question about involving parents. This is probably the biggest reason I wanted to run. I have watched a school board that carefully tells you exactly what they want you to hear. They allow one hour of public comment at the beginning of every meeting. No dialogue, no questions, no back and forth, and that's it. So 12 hours total of public comments a year. That's not acceptable. That's not representation. We have to fix that.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay. Question number four will be for Randy. Let's see. Okay, Randy, you're on the board, and you're running for reelection. And I know D12 just hired a new superintendent. So I'm going to go to one of our questions here. Under what circumstances would you recommend or consider termination of a superintendent?
Thank you. Would really be a malfeasance-type topic. The school board creates an education plan. They are our only employee. Superintendent is the one that they answer to us as a school board. And if they're not following the plan, those would be some of the areas that we would look at. The implementation of the plan. And if they miss some of our policies, we do set policies as a board that need to be followed by the district and his staff and all the teachers. So that would be one of the places we would, that main place we would look at. If there's a criminal act or something of that nature by the superintendent, that would also be grounds for at least suspension or complete termination. Going back to some of the other questions, I guess the one about number two, I kind of just answered. Our constitutional position under the authority is to supervise the superintendent as our only employee and to oversee what's called the education plan for all of our buildings. This district actually, interestingly, recently took over Zebulon Pike Detention Facility near Penrose Stadium. Some of the switches went on between District 2 and District 12, and they moved the younger kids over to Zeb Pike. So we teach about 27 kids over there under our new review. So we've also got what is now an eighth school building in our jurisdiction. So I think that's all I have. If you have more questions, let's see. We also have the Young Life and so forth in our schools. So the Bible and so forth, those types of things. We have, what is it, the FAC? I'm forgetting what that stands for, those acronyms, but the Athletic Folks, and it's basically.
Fellowship of Christian Athletes, I think, is who you're going for. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Randy. And last but not least, we all know, will be Rayanne. And Rayanne, question for you. There are state-mandated programs in the statutes that require a teaching and promotion of ideology that is in fact grounded in critical theory. And this also applies to programs such as bullying, suicide prevention, et cetera. What would your plan be to update those and/or remove the ones based in critical theory from your school district?
That's a very good question. In discussing critical race theory, we also need to discuss DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, which is the rebranded version of critical race theory, which is what we're seeing in our schools. We know they're asking the pronouns, even of the little kids, to confuse them from the start. And God is not of a spirit of confusion, so we know where that comes from. The way to resolve the problem is to not take money and beholden unto others if they're not to the purpose that is for our schools. It starts from the top, just like the states are trying to figure out now how to take back power from the federal so that we can have our autonomy. So the districts need to take back autonomy from the state, which is getting money from the federal in their agenda. That's how we do it. And more money does not make a school better. The other thing I would like to circle back to is what is the authority that the school board has that is clearly defined? It is to hire and fire the superintendent and to set curriculum. And if the curriculum is not allowing critical race theory, then we don't have a problem. So that is within the purview and the purpose of the school board. If they are letting that authority go to a superintendent or other parties, groups, advocates, then they relinquish that power, and that was theirs to begin with. It's on them.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to use a little moderator's discretion here, because we have a little bit of extra time with this group. And I'm going to ask another policy question, but it was not one that you were given to prepare. And I'm going to ask that you take just one minute to respond to this. And we'll just go, for this one, we'll just go down the line, because you're all going to answer the same question. But as many of us have seen and heard and read, there is a lack of discipline and consequences for students in schools, not necessarily here, but in general. And that is a growing trend, things like using cell phones in classrooms and et cetera, et cetera. There are much more severe things going on in other parts of the country right now, and they do happen here. We haven't had one locally, thankfully, that's been like this. But what would your response be to getting the school district to be more stringent on student discipline and/or consequences for bad behavior? Lynn, I'll let you go ahead and start, and we'll just go down the line. If you do one minute, please.
Actually, discipline is another reason I wanted to run for the school board, so good question. I think we've had a problem in District 12 uniformly applying discipline standards. I have seen certain children get away with everything because they don't have an involved parent. And then I see children who have involved parents get called in at... And then I see children who have involved parents get called in time after time after time. I'm going to tell a story, hope I don't embarrass my son. He is a third grader, started this year off in his third-grade classroom. About the second week of school, we got a phone call in the middle of the day, both my husband and I, in the middle of work, that there had been an incident and that he was with the mental health professionals and they were evaluating the situation. What had happened was there was a hornet in the classroom, he pointed it out, and a little girl complained that he was using a gun finger. Six mental health professionals ascended on my child and scared him half to death. It's not acceptable.
Thank you, Lynn. Rayanne, same question.
Accountability is very important in our society, that we've definitely kind of sidestepped personal, individual responsibility. If we make a rule, we need to make sure that it is followed. One example I could think of is a mask. If it's really there for health, then it should be enforced. So, I don't know why the kids are going running around with masks around their chin. The way that I've seen that some other districts offer discipline is age-appropriate and consistent discipline. So, what happens to one kid, it needs to happen to another kid. If they break the rule, it's uniformly applied. Vanguard did pretty good with it.
Thank you. Mary Louise?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on what Rayanne said. It has to be done uniformly. If it happens to one kid, the consequence has to happen for the other kid, and it comes down to policy as well. And that, when the school board creates policy that is clear and concise in regards to discipline, it is the superintendent's job to follow through with that and make sure that the administration, teachers, principals, counselors are following through with the policy.
Thank you. Randy?
Yes, some of the things have already been said, but we have policies at the school board level that we administer discipline for, and we have to follow those policies. So, that's how suspensions and expulsions are overseen. Each of the buildings has somewhat different approaches to some things. It's appropriate for elementary level to have certain standards and a little bit different as you go up to middle school and high school. So, all those standards are set forth, from dress codes to other things that are important. And so, we have those at the policy level, and they need to be followed, or we may get sued. And we have had lawsuits from time to time that, and all districts do. So, we don't want to be in the lawsuit world. So, safety is very important to our administration and to us as board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Joyce? Sure.
So, I have a different perspective. And so, when we talk about discipline, it's pretty harsh, right? When we talk about the same discipline across the board, that's pretty harsh because everybody's unique and they face different circumstances at home. They're raised in different cultures and different family members, different values. And so, I would like to look at it as character building. And so, we know that character building is really important and civic engagement is really important. So, that's what I would like to focus on. I would like to understand the behavior, so I have a background in behavior, right? Social worker, that's what, we don't just work at DHS, we look at the behavior of people. And so, just understanding what caused that behavior and maybe redirecting that.
Fantastic, thank you for that. Okay, we're going to move on now to the character questions, and these were not provided in advance, but we are going to do them the same way. They'll be random, two-minute responses. Candidates, feel free to circle back if you hear a question that you'd like to go back and address once you've taken care of yours. All right. Question number one will be for, two minutes? We won't do that to Mary Louise, we won't make her go twice because then she doesn't get to circle back. She should have the circle-back ability. Okay, Lynn, number one, sorry, you lose your circle-backness here. That's not even a word, but okay. Question number one for Lynn. What are your core values?
That's a good question. I think I am a rule follower. My family hates me for it, I'll tell you. They get mad because I'm a lawyer, that's how I look at the world. There are rules and we follow them. I think that's one of my values. I also think I am an incredibly trusting person. If you say you're going to do something, I trust you to do it. And that's kind of how I feel about our school district and why I got so disappointed when I realized that I had trusted them and they weren't trustworthy. I think I, let's see, of course, my faith, that is important, my family. I was raised by the two most amazing people in the world. Of course, I'm sure a lot of people say that, but I have the most generous, wonderful parents in the world. So, they raised us to be responsible, accountable, to do the right thing and to stick up for people when they couldn't. I think that's it, since I'm first.
Okay. Well played. All right. Question number two for candidate number four, which is Randy. Randy, what role do you feel that parents get to play in the decision-making of a school board?
Thank you. Well, the parents are very important, obviously, to how we administer all the rules that we set, the education plan and so forth, from the curriculum down to the smallest of policies, school times, when school starts, these kinds of things, which we changed in the last 12 to 24 months, and dress codes and things like that. So, we seek input at that level on those kinds of policies before we institute them. And we sometimes set committees to look through that. We have an athletic committee, there's a pool committee, and then we most recently have had a committee on some of the diversity matters and some of the other things, the school bell policy for the high school and the other schools, which was recently changed. And that's a work in progress, it may not stay that way, it may change again. But we try to hear from the public. We have multiple meetings where we review policies, we have a first reading, a second reading, and then a final review. Sometimes that'll be weeks or months before those are taken effect. But input from the public is very important. We've recently launched a YouTube page to have our board meetings live, so people don't have to come necessarily to the meeting in person, but can be available remotely and have input and hear what we're doing at the board level. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question will be for candidate number six, Joyce. And Joyce, I'm going to ask you, what is the main reason you decided to run for the school board?
Well, the main reason I decided to run for the school board is because in my community work, I learned a lot. I learned that there's communities in District 2 that have a lower life expectancy rate than the rest of the city by 12 to 14 years. I learned that we have the highest poverty rate. I learned that we have the highest minority rate in the city. I learned that we have higher crime rates. I learned so much, and I feel obligated to take my knowledge and my experience in collaboration to enhance the community, bring greater access to food, access to education, access to opportunity, employment. I feel like I'm obligated because I have that knowledge. The word says that where much is given, much is required. And I feel that I am just strongly compelled to do this work for the betterment of our youth, the next generation, and really just to be on that mountain of influence and make change. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Reminder, you can circle back if you'd like to. Next question for Rayanne. You actually addressed one of these in your opening statement, so I'm going to go with, how does the attachment of government funding to the money that comes to the school districts affect your decision-making as a board member?
I understand in business, if you have a contract, you are held to that contract. We have accepted some grants or applied for some grants in our district that have come with some very serious strings attached. We are a country with a rule of law, so we need to follow these laws. But where we are able to separate and potentially even give back so that we are not bound by what we have agreed to, some of us may be not understanding truly what has been agreed to, to including some of these medical clinics that are coming to our schools. There's some very serious implications, all the way down to our youngest kids, about not having parental consent involved. And we know where that goes. So, right, that's a complex question, it's a funding question, and it's about undoing what has been done and going forward in the right direction. Going back to values, it's always been in our family, God, family, country. Our purpose is to glorify God. At home, we read the Federalist Papers. That's a challenge. I did not grow up learning from that, I'm a product of public education, but getting a whole new education in this point in life. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay, very good, thank you. So, by default, Mary Louise, last question. What experience do you have that you believe will make you an effective school board member?
Well, for 18 years, I ran a drug and alcohol treatment center for both men and women. I worked with parole, probation, mental health. We actually had clients that were in our facility, ICDTP clients, who were actually, they were actually prisoners in our location. They were incarcerated in our facility. I've dealt with crisis management, I've dealt with policies, I've created RFQs for funding sources, I've dealt with discipline. And one thing I'd like to say with that is, when an issue occurs, yes, you take the individual into consideration, you take motive, that's huge for me, motive is a big factor in anything that we do. What was your motive? And then looking at the person, their history, their patterns. And an important thing to do is help change patterns, help look at belief systems and what causes you to make certain choices so that they're educated and they can think, what can I do differently next time? But then the discipline also needs to be in place because the discipline is a thing that causes change. If there's no consequence, I can speed down the road 90 miles an hour all day long, day after day, and if there is no consequence, what would stop me from speeding down the road day after day? Nothing. Nothing but my own, if that's what I want to do, that's what I'm going to do. Consequences are important. So, that being said, I feel like I communicate well with people on a one-on-one basis and in a group. I enjoy people, I love talking to people, I love meeting people, I like working with people and collaborating and making positive change, and that's it.
Bingo. All right, thank you all for that. Absolutely, round of applause for them, please. So, I'm going to step out one more time with the moderator's prerogative here since we had a little extra time. We're still actually going to end in about the same time period. I'm going to do another lightning round question, so it's a yes or no. This could have been a character question that would have had to answer, but I don't want us to go down a rabbit hole, I don't want us to get someplace we don't need to be because this could open up different conversation. So, we're going to do one more lightning round, this is going to be hand up for yes, keep the hand down for no. So, Colorado State statutes allow for school districts to run independent elections. They do not have to participate in the county-coordinated election, run through the clerk and recorder. Would you support your district running and controlling its own election process in the future? Okay, we'll repeat that one more time. So, state statute allows for school districts, excuse me, allows for school districts to run independent elections. They do not have to participate in the county-coordinated election. So, you don't have to participate in what's going on now with the ballots and et cetera. So, that's all coordinated through the county clerk. So, would you support your district running and controlling your own election process? That would mean not only getting ballots and information out, but the counting thereof. Would you support your own district in the future controlling its own election process? Okay? So, there we have it. Okay, I'm going to ask everyone out here to please stay seated for a moment. We're going to dismiss the candidates now, they're going to go out to their tables out back. When I dismiss you guys here in just a couple of minutes, I have a few things to say. I encourage you to go back there and spend as much time as you want, get to know the candidates, ask them questions, et cetera, et cetera. Please take your water, your phone, otherwise I'm keeping that, everything that you can, and we'll take care of the placards. But if you guys want to head down and back to your tables, we'll give you a moment to do that. Round of applause, everybody, as they're headed out. Please, all the way around, for sure. We really appreciate all of you guys being here, spending your time with us.